Well, good evening. How's everybody tonight? All right, we're gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting to order for October fifteenth. Everybody could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. A lot here on all you kids say that that was all. Ball, ball, please. Mr. Grigsby, here. Mr. Haynes, here. Mrs. McCarthy, here. Mrs. Saxon, here. And Mr. Vaca, here. Finalization of the agenda. Is there anything to add or remove?
The agenda is final, it's presented.
Thank you. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the written summary of the regular minutes for the meetings on September third, twenty twenty four, September seventeenth, twenty twenty four, and September thirtieth, twenty twenty five. Moved by Mrs. McCarthy, seconded by Mr. Grigsby. Ball, call please.
Mrs. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby.
Yes.
Mr. Haynes.
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon.
Yes.
And Mr. Vaca, the yes. Okay, well, we'll write in the superintendent's treasurer's report.
Excellent. We have a number of reports this evening, and we are so fortunate and grateful that we have such a great crowd to see some of the pretty incredible things that are happening in the district. So first, I would like to give the call to the podium. Mr. Bill Sherman and Ms. Claire Ben from TBA in line construction, who are going to give us a quick update about where we are in our.
Hello, everyone. Good evening. Um, we will try to be quick because we understand there's a full agenda. So we're excited, though, to be here to share where we are in the design of the projects that are in the works for your district. Um, of course, the new high school and then the new transportation and maintenance facility. As everybody knows, these are in the works to address, of course, opportunities of increasing safety for the schools' space since you are a growing district, and then providing new spaces for academic excellence. There's a lot of really exciting types of spaces that will be provided. So we're gonna go from a through at sort of a high level of what we've been up to over the last almost year, if you look like, um, where we are in the design process. And then, um, what you can expect as we move forward into construction. And so we'll walk through that in a number of slides. Uh-huh, there we go. Okay. So last year, in the spring, we started, um, a lot of engagements with everyone. So educational visioning was a really exciting day where we gather community members, students, staff members. Um, and we talked through what the goals and the vision were for the education opportunities as we move forward. So it was a lot of hard work and fun. Sorry.
It was.
No, it's okay. And then we have been having regular design meeting meetings, um, at least weekly, we're meeting and we're going through what is developing with the design work of of both projects. And then, oh, it's okay. You, you were watching. Yeah. And then we've been meeting with staff regularly as well. So we have a number of different types of meetings. Some are departmental, where we meet with all staff, and then others are, um, construction leadership team, which representatives of different different departments, so that we can start talking about the overall vision as everything unites. And then we also, so we like to say that educators are designing the interior. Um, but the community, of course, is looking at the exterior all the time. So we like to give opportunities for community to have input on what the exterior is gonna look like, since you'll see it for decades yet to come. So we held visual preference activities, um, before the summer. We had, we were thrilled to get over fifteen hundred respondents, and there were two common themes that arose, things like making sure it was unique, that you have a campus feel, but that it is clearly a transition from middle school to high school, that it's timeless, so not built for like one moment in time that's too trendy. Um, that it has statement as a main entry, so that people know where they keep going into the building, and they're not trying doors around the campus that they shouldn't be trying. Um, and that there's sufficient covering for students as they are coming in. And then the last one was talking about textures, making sure that there was playfulness sort of to the exterior and breaking down that scale. So we are still not even halfway through design. There's a lot to go as far as it's good, as far as opportunities. Um, but we wanted to show you where we are at this time. So this is the site plan. We are sitting, of course, in the academic center, which is that white building north is up. Um, and you probably parked in the parking lot that leads you to the entry, the board office. Just north of that parking lot is where we are planning for the new transportation and maintenance center to be relocated to. So that means the bus fleet will be back there, and that activity will be back in that practice field. We labeled some of the new parking lots, so you can see those labeled here. The big grassy area in the middle is where the existing high school is currently sitting. It will remain operational until the new high school is done. And then the large yellow shape in the sort of in the bottom of the image is the new high school. Um, it is two stories, twice as large as your existing high school, so there's a ton of really exciting spaces that are within it. So then just to look diagrammatically at the floor plans. That sort of curved drive to the left of the image is the main entry drive already existing onto your main campus. So the new high school is gonna sit just to the right of that. The other drive that's coming off of Bainbridge is in the same spot as Wilcox, where where the old Wilcox Drive used to be and where it still exists. So to do a really brief walkthrough through that first floor, that may, the biggest triangle is the main entry. Right upon entering that, if you turn right, you'd go into the academic spaces. So the purple and the gold colors there are academic spaces that are business, family, consumer, science, um, science and math. As you would continue over to the right, sort of the pinks and purples are art, career tech, music, the auditorium, so really art-focused in that area. The orange in the middle is student dining. It's linking everything together, kind of acting as the central heart to the building. And then the pink and the teal are athletic spaces stretching towards the stadium. And then second floor is, um, it's a little bit deceiving the floor plan where you see the little black text that's saying that it's open to below. So those are just really tall spaces. It's not additional space. Um, it is things like the, sorry, I'm, I'm also hitting it, so I'm missing you off. And things like gyms, which are tall, the auditorium, which is tall, but then that gold space is really where you have, um, classrooms that are stacking. So things like the humanities, social studies, world language, English and math are in that area towards Bainbridge. And we have guidance there as well and media center. This is showing the math thing, which we all think is helpful. So in the front area, so Bainbridge is sort of bottom right in this image, is where we've got that two-story academic piece. And that's where we're trying to break down sort of the scale of the building. It's a little bit more detailed in its elevation. We have to act all over it because it's still in development, but, um, that's where you get two-story piece. The larger volumes, like the gyms, are the ones that are stretching again towards the left um, and towards stadium. And then central to all of that is that main entry that we're trying to make this sort of statement piece. And then you can.
Right.
Okay, I was like, I think I just skipped another. I'm sorry.
Very good.
Okay. So then from the other side, you would see the auditorium, which also has, um, a unique entrance point. So can you go back one? I'm sorry.
Yes.
So this is looking at person height rather than drone or bird height. Um, so that's that main entry piece, and you can start to see what we're talking about with breaking down the academic area, but letting the gym be these larger volumes, and then using that sort of Northridgeville deep blue color to denote areas of entry. So that's that main entry with a large canopy for student coverage. And then in the back is where you have the auditorium entry. So if there's a large event going on, um, that has its own dedicated entry, separate from the main entry, which is what this is showing. And then in the area with the gym and the pool, um, this is also an area that could have a entry for pool functions and then also for student athletes if there was something going on in the main competition. And then I'm gonna turn it over to Bill. And I did not introduce.
Yeah.
Well, good evening. Um, I just wanna talk through a little bit about the construction timeline. So thus far, hand in construction, we've really been in the support role. We've been providing cost estimates as the design advances, just as a barometer, checking against the budget to make sure we're on track, and we are on track. So we've been through the first schematic design phase for the high school, and, uh, we have, we are aligned with the budget. So that's wonderful news. But if I could kind of show the timeline. This is an overall look at how all these projects on the campus will play out, how we're mapping them out currently. So next year, we'll be focused on the new transportation and maintenance center. That's the orange bar at the bottom of the screen. That's really for the lion's share of twenty twenty five. And then beginning in summer, we'll commence with some early site work, uh, for the new high school. The new high school construction of the building proper will start at the beginning of twenty twenty six and be complete in summer of twenty, uh, twenty eight. Um, when that building is occupied, as Claire had mentioned, we will then, um, move over to the vacant existing high school and demolish that, remove that, and convert that to athletic fields, that space. So I just look on campus. We know that your campus is twenty-four seven. It is a hub. So we know there's a lot of activity, and we have to fit into the fold of that with, uh, minimal disruption. So, um, this is the campus, kind of an aerial view of all the existing buildings that are on the campus currently and the parking configurations as we, as they look now. Next spring, March of twenty twenty five, we intend to kick off, uh, the construction of a new transportation maintenance center. And that will sit relatively removed from the rest of the campus. So that's easy to separate our construction activities from the rest of the campus. We will be fenced in and separated from all the campus activities. That will run from March to the end of, uh, in the end of twenty twenty five. But in summer of twenty twenty five, when school, uh, uh, summer session begins, we're gonna take over more of the footprint of the campus. We will start to construct additional parking lots. Those are shown in blue on the, this aerial slide. And then notably, we're gonna take over the footprint of where that new high school is gonna sit. That is shown in orange. Um, so we'll be grading, we'll be doing earthwork during the summer, trying to get as much of that done in, uh, the favorable weather months. Um, when school commences back, returns back, I should say, in fall of twenty twenty five. Yes, please. Thank you, Paul. Um, we hope sometime in that fall semester, not ready for start of school, I want to be clear, but sometime in that fall semester, we're gonna start turning over some of those new parking lots to alleviate some of the parking pressures that we know exist on campus. We're gonna stay fenced in inside that big orange zone, um, where the new high school will sit, and we will be working very separated, physically separated with a fence from all the rest of the campus, uh, activities. All of our workforce will go through background checks. They will all be identified at all time. We, uh, take safety as the paramount, really, the paramount importance, uh, on campus. We know we're working on your campus. By the end of twenty twenty five, we expect, or early in, uh, twenty-six, we expect a turnover to new transportation and maintenance center that allows us to demolish the existing bus garage. Um, and then kind of stay in the confines of that area where the existing bus garage sits currently, that red area, that will be converted to additional parking. Thanks, Paul. And then spring of twenty twenty six, that's when we, um, anticipate the new high school coming out of the ground, so to speak. You'll start to see the actual structure, the physical shape of that, um, construction taking place. At that point, we'll probably, our plan is to use the existing maintenance building as our construction headquarters. So we're gonna keep that online, but it'll be inside of our fenced construction zone. At this point, we will solely be limited to that, uh, kind of that southeast side of campus. In, uh, summer of twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-eight, now it seems like a long way away, we will turn over the new high school, and then we'll try to get as much of the heavy, ugly demolition work for, um, the existing high school done during those summer months, when, when campus activity is at its minimum. And then in fall of twenty-eight, we'll finalize the fields and get those seeded and ready, uh, for use in the following year. So that's kind of a quick overview of how, how our activities are expected to look on campus for everybody. Um, we know construction can be fatiguing, fall a few weeks. We understand this. We do a lot of our, our construction on occupied sites. But we also know that there's an upside to that. It's really a working laboratory for students, for, for really, we can make it part of the education. And we are excited about all the things that we can do and possibilities. We've done soup to nuts. We've done, uh, career days, of course, but we've, we literally use the building to teach thermodynamic properties, and, um, we bring in some of the science classes on some of our past projects. There's a whole host of opportunities that exist on this construction site while we are constructing this building adjacent to your occupied sites. Um, additionally, we're gonna wanna engage all the community. It's super exciting to see how their, their tax dollars are being spent. We'll have community tours during the, uh, construction. We will literally separate, um, pass during non-construction working hours, and we will ha, open up the building while it's under construction and certain times, uh, throughout the course of construction for the community to come through and kind of see how this building's taking shape. So I'm super excited. I'll turn back over to that one. One next step, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. I think you probably could read up there, but the next steps are really to continue what we've been doing. So continue working on the high school design. The discussions are becoming more and more detailed about what sort of utilities each space needs, what are the furnishing needs, how exactly are spaces getting used? Um, design completion of the transportation and maintenance center, since that one is starting construction so much sooner. Um, and then, of course, being here more times as well, as far as updating on the design as it progresses. So later updates to include more information about the interior. And then that was, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And I'm gonna turn the.
One of the things that has been an incredible experience with Claire and Bill and their team, um, has been their engagement with our staff. You know, meeting with each individual department, taking the feedback, putting it into an actual design, uh, and getting that feedback from our staff that people are listening to us and are making changes, has really been, uh, you know, both rewarding and exciting, I think, for us, and truly, uh, shows, you know, that I think we have the absolute best team in place to take us forward in this project. And Bill, thank you so much. Uh, we appreciate all of your work. Does anyone have any questions?
No, but I do wanna, with hand in construction, one of the things that stood out about their organization is the safety of our students. The clear separation, the, the transition plan to make sure our students are safe, the background checks. They have literally done billions of dollars worth of high school bills and school bills on existing campuses. So they're used to working around school-aged children and students, and they really stood out as far as that goes, their commitment to the safety of our students and figuring out that transition plan. So we're excited and looking forward to having this project and if you could figure out a way to bump it off a year. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Uh, so before we get to our very exciting staff and student recognition, we do have a quick update from Dr. Heather Miller, who'd like to share with us the great news about our district report card this year. Dr. Miller, thank you so much.
All right. So, um, you all have this in front of you, and so because I know we are short on time for today, uh, I wanted to make sure that you had access to the data in front of you and so that you can take notes. Because any areas that you have additional questions, we can go a little bit more in depth on November eighteenth when we come back together. So if you wanna like take some notes and, uh, let me know if there's any specific areas that will help to streamline the process. But lots of exciting information to share with you for today. So this'll just be kind of a, a high-level overview. So as you can see, uh, we were four point five star rated out of five again this school year. Um, but what's very exciting is that we actually gained some additional stars. So if you look at the next slide, you'll see a distribution of districts across the state. And we are very solidly in the one-third of all the districts across the state, and even better than that, when you break down our actual number. So our actual number was three point nine, and if you look there on the little chart, you can see that that's actually the high end of four point five stars. So we were really, uh, close to almost breaking virtually the five stars. So very, very excited about our overall rating. Lots and lots to celebrate and recognize across the district here. So as you know, the overall school rating is based on five component scores. For next year, there'll be a sixth one added in, so we're just gonna touch on that briefly tonight. Um, but those five component scores, we're just gonna look at each one separately, so that you can see how that overall rating of four point five stars comes to be. So the first one is achievement. Uh, we did earn four stars in the achievement. There's actually two pieces to the achievement, but only one is rated in the stars. Uh, but both equally important for us to consider when we're looking at the data. So the first piece is the performance index, and so that one, you can go ahead, Paul. Um, this is the eighty-three point three percent. So this is looking at how students are performing on each assessment. So when they take the fourth grade math test, are they getting to that proficient level, or are they getting to higher than proficient level? And so these are rated, um, you can see the way that they're, uh, adjusted there. The higher our students are scoring, the more percentage points they're getting because it's rated on a, a variable scale. So, uh, it's, it's values, the values are higher, the higher the students are scoring. So, um, you can see there that those multipliers do factor in pretty quickly, and that is how we are getting to that eighty-three percent. Uh, in this component, though, as I mentioned, this is not included in the grade, but it is also really important for us to look at how students are doing across each subject area. And so you can see here at a glance, all of the areas that have an asterisk, uh, were areas that we did, um, see some improvements from last school year. So we saw eleven areas improved from last year, which is pretty amazing. Um, and if you look at the high school, you'll notice that Algebra One went from seventy-eight point four percent to eighty-seven point three percent, which is an enormous amount of growth in one school year. So very proud. Um, we really are seeing the benefits of all of the curricular work that we've been doing over the past several years. Uh, we're seeing the results of the TBT process that Algebra One for really is a testament to the hard work that the teachers are putting in at the high school, where they're looking at data and breaking it down and figuring out exactly what standard students are doing well on, and which ones they need additional support. So this is just a culmination of all of that hard work and item analysis and all of those things we've been doing for the past several years coming to fruition, and we're starting to see those results in our scores. We do recognize that there is a couple we can still continue to grow in, um, but we're doing that work as well. The principals will tell you that's, that's what we focus on every district leadership team meeting, um, every meeting at the building level. We are really focused on improving our practices, which then in turn, um, shows on our bookers. So we're not solely looking at these scores as a, a judgment to how our students are achieving, but it certainly does show once we're putting in the work and seeing improvements in classroom, that these scores follow. Uh, the progress component. So this is looking at how students are, um, achieving from one year to the next. So as Chris Palfrey likes to say, that one lap around the track, are they growing consistently with their peers across the state? And you can see we have five stars in this category again, which we've maintained for the last several years, and we're really excited to say that no matter where our students are achieving, we're growing in more than one year. So even though we're making, um, those gains and achievements, this is more of a testament to the hard work that our teachers are putting in every day, because it says no matter where they come to us, we are pushing them further. And then this next slide just breaks that down by different, uh, all the different tested areas. So that dark, uh, grayish color is actually the highest rating, and then those green colors are kind of the next. Um, and really looking at, again, how many of our students in those tested areas are making one year's worth of growth in each academic school year. Gap closing. So this is looking at, uh, how our students and student subgroups are performing compared to their peers. So if you look at that chart on the next slide, you'll see those red dots are where we would like students to be achieving in each of those areas. And that bar graph is showing where they actually are achieving in each of those areas. So again, that's how we're getting to those five-star ratings here, um, because we are moving all students. So this is a testament, again, um, that no matter where our students are coming from at that, we are continuing to push all students equally, um, to continue to close those gaps. And so as we keep doing really well with our progress and gap closing, you'll see those achievement numbers continue to climb because we are pushing them further than a year's worth, every single year, and that will eventually catch up. The next, um, piece that is included in that closing is chronic absenteeism, and this is definitely a hot topic around the table right now. Um, just for reference, last year, we were at eighteen point six percent chronic absenteeism across the district. So we did see this lower to eighteen percent. Uh, we do have some measures in place. We are starting to look at some absenteeism, uh, data and some attendance data through our district leadership team again as a catalyst and through our administrative team meetings. So we're again trying to figure out getting to the root of the problem of our students that are not coming to school, why that might be, and putting supports in place to help them, uh, so that they can be independent. Graduation rate, really excited to report that we went from three stars to four stars with our graduation rate. So this was one of the areas where we saw a bump, which was what, uh, pushed us into that stronger four point five star overall rating this year. So if you look at the next star, this does break down into the students in a four-year cohort and then also the five-year cohort. So, um, we had ninety-three point one percent in our four-year cohort, but we saw a really big jump with our five-year cohort from ninety point two percent to ninety-four point six percent. So because we were able to graduate so many more students within that five-year cohort, that's where we got that extra bump here in this indicator. Uh, also very excited to report that our early literacy went up from two stars to three stars. Uh, so you'll see here in the calculation that this is really looking at three different pieces to get that overall score. It's looking at the students in third grade, how many met proficient on that third grade reading assessment. It's looking at the number of students that we've promoted to fourth grade through either, um, the passing of the assessment or through one of the alternate measures. And then it's looking at our improvement K-three literacy, which means that students on a RIN, reading improvement monitoring plan, from one year to the next, how many are getting better. So if they started on a plan in kindergarten, how many of them stayed on a plan in first grade, or did they get a little bit better? So it's looking at those three measures, and we actually saw improvement in all three from last year, so that's how we were able to bump up to, uh, three stars from two. Um, I will let you know that we did change our diagnostic also this past year, so this, there was a lot of fluctuation in these scores. Um, but so we are really excited about that overall. All right. And then college, career, workforce, and military readiness. This is currently not graded, but it will be next school year. So we are, um, working with the state right now. I was actually in Columbus all day today, uh, for a BASSA report card meeting, where we spent a great majority of our time talking about this indicator, what this is going to mean for this year, and how it is likely to be reported out. So they're still working out exactly what it will look like because they're gathering data across the state right now to figure out where districts are. Um, but we do know that the areas that are starred here will be included in that report. So all of those dark blue areas will be things that they're looking at. So they're going to look at all of our students in a four-year cohort, and they're going to figure out how many of those students earned one or more of those dark blue areas. And then they're going to divide it by the total number of students in that cohort. So that's how they're going to figure out the overall percentage, and then we don't know exactly how that will translate to a star rating, yes, but that information should be coming soon. And then lastly, again, lots to celebrate here. You'll see lots of improvement from where we were at this time last year. These are our overall building ratings. So we, we really are very proud of all of the work that's happening across the district, and I hope you can see that, um, that it is starting to make a difference, and we are really starting to see some improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. And now for a main event this evening, we have so many people here sitting in the audience who have been amazing listening to these presentations. Uh, but we are going to start today with Ms. Andrea Vance, who is going to introduce our students of the month of October from the CLC. It's Vance.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening. Um, I have the pleasure of introducing our two students of the month. Um, I'm actually gonna start with our, um, preschool students. I'm actually going to start with our preschool student who unfortunately cannot be here tonight. She is sick, but I believe her family said that they were going to try to watch this evening. So our student is Riley Wilson and Riley is in Ms. Feroni's classroom. And Ms. Feroni writes that Riley comes to school ready to learn each day. She's thoughtful and kind to all of her teachers and classmates and is always trying to help. She is consistently on task and is always modeled modeling positive classroom behaviors. We are so proud of you, Riley, and I hope that you're feeling better tonight. Congratulations, Riley. And our next student of the month that we have is Tommy Quickly. And Tommy, can you bring me up so everybody can see you? Tommy came dressed to impress tonight, so. So Tommy is in kindergarten and he is in Mrs. Barbara's class. And Mrs. Barbara says that from the first day Tommy walked into the classroom, he has been an absolute delight. From helping his teachers to being empathetic to his peers, he comes to school each day with a smile or a smile on his face and ready to do his best. He is the first student to offer a friend assistance, quick to help teachers with tasks throughout the day, and shows respect and kindness to everyone he meets. What is truly amazing about Tommy is that he does all of this, all of these things that were mentioned because he knows it's the right thing to do. But not just because of that or looking for an award. He does it because he is truly Ranger Strong. Keep shining, Tommy. You're a gift to the classroom and to our building and to this world. We can't wait to see what the future holds for you, Tommy. Congratulations. And next I'd like to introduce Mrs. Julio from Liberty.
Hi, good evening. Okay, tonight I have the pleasure of introducing two, here, let's get you this way. You can see our two students of the month for Liberty. First I have Addie Wilson. Chloe Addie, thank you. Addie is in Ms. Moore's class. She's a first grade student. And Ms. Moore, Row, Addie is such an amazing student. She is respectful, hardworking, kind, and is always prepared for the day with a smile on her face. She truly represents Ranger Strong behavior and always puts forth her best effort. Thank you for being a great role model for your peers. We are so proud of you. And I will say, we see Addie a lot around the school and in the cafeteria and she always really is doing great things. And then for second grade, we have Reed Zurey. Reed is from Mississippi Chiricke second grade class. And she wrote that Reed comes in every day with a smile on his face through office smiles and is ready to learn. He is such a great helper to all of his peers, including his teachers. His positive attitude is very contagious. He has such a big heart and seems to love school. We are so proud of you, Reed, keeping Ranger Strong.
Thank you.
Oh, and Mr. Falcone.
Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege of announcing four students of the month. In Rice, a very big building, you have some fantastic students. Our first student of the month is third grader Jeremiah Baranelli Martinez. Jeremiah has demonstrated teamwork the first day of school. He is always looking for ways to help others and works hard to make sure everyone is included. Thank you for being Ranger Strong, a Ranger Strong role model. Keep up the great work, Jeremiah. Our next student of the month is Ashlyn Taylor. Here's some things that Ashlyn's teachers said about her. Ashlyn consistently demonstrates enthusiasm and positivity in her learn. Taking responsibility for her academic success. She is a kind and helpful classmate, always showing respect towards others. She has a strong work ethic and a positive attitude. Keep up the great work, Ashlyn. Congratulations. Our next student of the month is sixth grader Jacob Tereski. Jacob is a sixth grader in our Able classroom. He has demonstrated Ranger Strong attributes since the beginning of the school year. He has shown respect by following directions in and out of the classroom, using his words or device to ask questions and being part of the crew. Jacob has begun to take ownership of his everyday routines and responsibilities within the classroom, which is a great reflection of all strong attributes. Congratulations, Jacob. And last but not least, Annabelle Lloyd. In the beginning of this year, on routine, Annie has demonstrated a wonderfully respectful attitude in her work and in her classes. She works very well with her peers and always has a positive outlook in whatever we are working on that day. We are super excited to have a student like Annie in our studio this year. Congratulations. I will turn it over to Mr. Turpin.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us here tonight. I am here to celebrate two of our students of the month from RHTA. Our first learner of the month is Gianna Fiscella. And Gianna was nominated by her sixth grade coach, Coach Swedko. This is what Coach Swedko had to say about Gianna. Gianna does a fantastic job of demonstrating Ranger Strong values of being respectful, being responsible, and being safe. She works hard on all of her assignments, is kind to peers and coaches, is always willing to help someone in need and goes out of her way to make sure that everyone feels included. She has also been a wonderful leader in her PDL group. And Coach Swedko said that she's very proud of Gianna and keep up the amazing work. Additionally, Gianna is also on the student council and she volunteers and helped in the office during any free time that she has. RHCA truly is a better place because Gianna is part of it. So congratulations, Gianna. And then our next student of the month is Jack Priest. Jack was unable to be with us here in person tonight, but he did join us on Zoom. Jack was nominated by Coach Maxwell, his eighth grade math coach. And this is what Coach Maxwell had to say about Jack. Jack has started off the year very strong in math. He is participating in class, working well with others, and asks questions when he has them. Coach Maxwell said she's very proud of how hard he's been working during their first two math units. Additionally, both classmates and coaches have noticed Jack really stepped up this year. After a class debate, one student complimented Jack by saying, I want to recognize Jack because I think he was able to step out of his comfort zone and give an opinion. When asked to nominate a fellow student for the learner of the month, another student also noticed that Jack has demonstrated Ranger Strong qualities by really leaning into his work. So Jack is always kind to his coaches and his classmates. He is a great teammate and he takes a lot of initiative in his PBL projects. So keep up the great work, Jack. Thank you very much.
The new card will be announcing the high school students of the month.
Good evening, everybody. It's good to be back. I have special presentations tonight, but I have to start by saying to Reed Zurey, you officially get first place in the second grade category for the best hair. In my world, we call that a mullet. I know because first place in the world, fourth grade category, unfortunately, is my grandson. But that's awesome. Keep it, people will, people will be envious. But I ask our high school students of the month to all come up. We got five out of seven. Could you all come up front? I'd like, I'd like all of our families to see this group all at once. And I'll say this to, you won't be back in the next few months and I will be presenting some of their friends and classmates as student of the month as they complete their senior year. These are the kids that you want your kids to become. I'm just telling you. I was asked by one of my colleagues, did you pick these kids? I said, they picked me. They're unbelievable. They're awesome. Two are not here, and what have we learned? Don't schedule anything on a band program night. You will lose. It's band dinner, it's their senior band dinner. And both John Drew Bowden and Morgan Whippleman declined because they wanted to be with their bandmates. The other five represent seven members of our senior class who collectively are two percent of the senior class. Two percent of our senior class are being recognized nationally for excellence by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation and the College Board. Did we put the stories up with them or do I have to read the stories? Okay, I got them. Because it's incredible. It started in the beginning. So I'm gonna read what Levi, so Levi asked me today, he said, don't get us anything because I'm not bringing nothing. Levi Bailey is a national merit semifinalist. Of one point five million high school juniors last year, Levi scored in the top one percent of all kids in the country. He was a character in Little Shop. Char.
Mushnik. Mushnik.
Mushnik, who's Mushnik? In Little, in Little Shop of Horrors. He killed it. And it's what he wanted to do. And I watched him the previous year aspire to be Mushnik the second year. You going to be in musical this year?
I plan to.
Excellent. He's excellent. In addition to his high achievement, he is in the drama club and the gaming and chess club. Favorite class, AP Chemistry. Favorite hobby, playing guitar. We're trying to set up a morning guitar club. And it's gonna happen. Dream college, MIT. And his dream job, chemist. Levi Bailey. In the order that you see that. Stephanie Trubitis is being recognized by College Board for BigFuture.com, a national program that recognizes student excellence again on the PSAT based on specific categories, based on ethnicity, based on first generation, Latino, African American, recognized nationally for her performance. Stephanie is a member of our swimming team. You think doing well nationally on the PSAT is hard? Swim. It's hard. She's a member of the National Honor Society, Hispanic Club, Anti-Bullying Club. Her favorite class are Biology and the Sciences. Favorite hobby, baking. Dream college, Cornell University. And her dream job, Anesthesiologist. Stephanie Trubitis. Alyssa Lavis, also a national merit semifinalist. Alyssa scored in the top one percent of all high school juniors. She's worked in our office. I know Alyssa a little better. I know everybody, but I know Alyssa better. She runs track and cross country. Alyssa wants to be the best, just like the rest of this crew right here. They are driven, driven to push themselves. Their competitors all get out, but they want to be the best that they can be. She's a member of the Key Club, Student Council, Aces, our academic challenge team, our model UN which we are developing, she's in on the ground floor, and a member of our National Honor Society. Favorite class, Biology. Hobbies, hiking and camping. Dream college, MIT. Dream job, biomedical engineer. No matter what I say about Ace Kids, they'll begin to scratch the surface. Alyssa Lavis. Andrea Hamilton. Andrea plays on the tennis team. She's in the book club, she's on a prom commission, photography club, environmental club. Favorite class, math. Favorite hobby, reading. Dream colleges, Gannon University. Dream jobs and accountants. Andrea Hamilton. And Andrea is also a Big Future dot com honoree, scoring for specific categories that identify her as a top student in the United States according to College Board. Congratulations. And finally, Mitchell Stewart. Mitchell is like a head taller than everybody. So I see Mitchell a lot. At least I see his head. People walk up by him, we give each other recognition every day. Mitchell plays soccer and track. And he is a mainstay on our back-to-back two-time Southwest Conference Soccer Team. Our soccer team is a tight-knit group that I would put up against any group that you could put up against them. They are gonna win. They are driven. He is a member of our varsity, our, our National Honor Society and our fellowship with Christian athletes groups. Oh, by the way, Mitchell is a commended scholar in the National Merit Scholarship process, which means that Mitchell scored in the top fifty thousand scores out of one point five million nationally last year. All of this is a really big deal. Mitchell's favorite class, drawing. Mitchell's favorite hobby, playing sports with his friends and teammates. Dream college, Bowling Green. And dream job, animator. Mitchell Stewart. Junior's are scholars, athletes, artists, servants, friends, teammates, and members of their family. They are among the most outstanding high school students that any community could ever hope for. I am proud of them. Congratulations. One of our students of the month to step into the.
What can we, do you want students?
What can we, do you want students?
For your staff, and we got one more recording.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
So we're not gonna do, yeah, we do staff first. Okay.
Let me introduce Annie Hostetler is going to quickly introduce our staff members of the month.
Good evening, everybody. For those of you attending your first board meeting, you can appreciate how difficult it is for me to follow Mr. Mueller every month. So I will do my best. It is my pleasure, on behalf of the Board of Education, to honor two of our employees for their exemplary service to the North Ridgeville City Schools. So I would first like to call up Mrs. Valerie Groff. Val first joined the staff at ECLC as a small group tutor that is a part-time kindergarten teacher, moving to a full-time position during the 2009-10 school year. During her career, Ms. Groff has served as a teacher mentor and a member of our building leadership team and district leadership teams. A new teacher nominated Val and had this to share. As a new teacher to ECLC and the district, she has been nothing but friendly and welcoming. She is consistently taking time out of her day to help not only me, but other teachers as well. She is an active member within our building, leading our TBTs, and also serving on the VLT and DLT. She is assisting us with the new curriculums as well as all of us trying to navigate the new materials. On top of that, students love her fun and inviting classroom. She has a wonderful rapport with parents and is truly an amazing teacher. Val is so wonderful that our new staff see what we have valued for many years. Congratulations, and thank you for setting an example for all of us. Our second employee this evening is Mrs. Shelley Clemens. She was unable to be with us this evening because she has a family commitment, but she was thrilled to be nominated. She started her career here with the North Ridgeville City Schools as a crossing guard at Liberty in 2007. The next year, she became a paraprofessional instructional aide at Liberty. She continued to fill roles in both our early childhood learning center and Liberty until the academic center opened in 2017, where she is still currently assigned. Mrs. Clemens was also nominated by a new teacher who had this to share. Shelley always goes above and beyond to make sure all of the students in our studio are successful. She's an incredible person to work with. I truly don't know how we'd make it through the day without Shelley's support. Congratulations, Shelley. I personally want to thank Shelley because you can't help but see her and smile. And so she is such a positive role model for all of us. Congratulations. And then I would just like to say thank you to all of our parents and staff members and students who nominated staff members this month. Your kind words are so nice to share in events like this and then also, you know, throughout the year. So congratulations again to Val and Shelley, thank you for everything that you do. And congratulations to all of our students that were recognized tonight as well.
Thank you, Miss Hostetler. And our final presentation this evening is actually coming out of Liberty Elementary, so we're gonna have the opportunity to learn from Mrs. Julio all of the great things happening with our first and second grade students. Thank you.
Annie, I was gonna say the same thing about going after this for me. Thanks for the buffer. That's helpful. Yeah, and thank you, Joe, for always. All right, tonight I am excited to share about everything going on at Liberty this year. It's only October, but we've already accomplished so much. So I've broken our presentation down, I'll try to keep it quick, into our four building goals this year. So this building goal is a goal that we've had for a couple of years. It was last year as well, so we're only just building upon our progress. You can see it's a little bit small, but these triangles come from AIMS Web. So it's the assessment data that we give, we give students this assessment three times a year in the fall, winter, and spring. And so on the far left, you can see that is the scores from our first graders in the fall of '23-'24. The second cone is our first graders in the fall of this year. So even though this is two different groups of students, it's really exciting to see that our students are coming in in the fall more prepared each year, which is a lot of like what Heather was touching on in her presentation. And it's a big kudos to Miss Van from the teachers at ECLC. So our first grade students are coming in, we're seeing more students in that green in tier one and less students needing like that intensive intervention in tier three. In that first cone, actually, it's 52% of students were in the red last year at the beginning of the year. So to see now it's only 35%, that's a big difference, which is exciting. The next two cones is our second grade data from last fall compared to this fall. So it is really neat to see like that very first cone and that very last cone is the same group of students. It's like our first graders last fall who are now our second graders this fall. So to see the difference in that like huge amount of reds, that really bitty bitty round is really exciting. So our students are coming in more prepared each year thanks to the work that our teachers are doing in their teacher-based teams, or they're, we call them TBTs. Also in TBTs, our teachers are working 90 minutes a week on just data analysis, waiting for intervention and enrichment, and just really looking at our new curriculum this year. Another exciting, exciting thing that aligns the building goal one is our K2 ABLE classroom. So historically, Liberty has had one ABLE classroom, and ECLC has had one ABLE classroom, and this year Liberty is lucky enough to have both ABLE classrooms. We do have a few kindergarten students at Liberty this year. And this aligns to our first building goal because our two ABLE classrooms now, the teachers have common playing time. So they're able to meet as a teacher-based team together every single day, really, if they'd like to, to discuss their students. So I put a couple of pictures up there of our students and some of the things that they're able to participate in this year. The first one is a speech group, the middle one is weekly music therapy. There's a music therapist that comes in each week to both classrooms. Both classrooms also do a weekly cooking club, which has been really cool to see. And with all the enhancements to the building this summer, we were able to add in a new small group space, which has been really beneficial for these classrooms and the paraprofessionals that work in there. And then both classrooms have access to the sensory room every day, which is really special for them. Also with our first building goal, it aligns to the work that our specialist teachers are doing. It's really exciting, as you can see in that top picture that we have dedicated learning spaces for all of our specialists this year. In the top right, you can see Mr. Yacko, our new PE teacher, he's working on dribbling in our brand-new gym, which has been really, really, I mean, I could go on and on, but how great it's been to have a dedicated gym space at Liberty. And then even across the bottom, like a quiet library for students to read books in and listen to stories in, having like a music classroom that's not in the middle of the building so that, you know, it's not as loud for everybody. And then even like a dedicated art classroom. These spaces have really like allowed our teachers, our specials teachers, to just have better access to materials, like they have places to feed them, they're able to use more things. And then in their TBT, their teacher-based teams, our specials have really been working on like content integration. So working with our JENET teachers and our ABLE teachers on integrating things that those students are doing in their classrooms. So science topics, social studies topics, our ABLE curriculums, TeachTown, so they've been working closely with them on integrating those as well. Our second building goal this year is new. It's focused on our two new curriculum benchmark, Advanced, which is our new ELA curriculum, and then Envisions, which is our new math curriculum. So really just focusing on teachers. This is really driven by the work that they're doing in their teacher-based teams, the teachers using these curriculums with fidelity. We've already seen big improvements, as Heather showed, in our report card from last year. So I'm excited to see like after these new curriculums where we can even go next year. The pictures along the bottom are just some things that I've seen in the classroom. The program, at least for ELA, is really aligned with the science of reading. There's a really big K5 vertical alignment. So right now, all students at Liberty are learning about life science. Actually, all students using Benchmark, Unit 1 is all about life science. So our first grade students are learning about animal habitats, and so are our second grade students, but it's like built upon. So they're learning a little bit more each year. And again, that's been great for our specialists. They can kind of tie that in across the whole entire building. And then all of the new curriculum come with intervention kits and enrichment opportunities for students, and then just preparing our students to be more ready for assessment as they're getting older. The format of the assessments here are really aligned with like the format of the Ohio State Test, which is a good. Our third building goal this year, we're building upon the work that we did last year with PDIS. In the middle, you can see our Ranger Strong store, which is really, if you're a student here from Liberty, it's really exciting when that comes around every two weeks. We have parent volunteers who run our prize cart and bring it to classrooms. In the bottom right, you can see it like has a little grid. Every student in the school has a sticker chart, and so they earn stickers for showing positive behavior. And when they get to 20, they can redeem a prize. Prizes, some are smaller, like 20 stickers, the little things on the cart, some are bigger, like basketball, the little basketball over on the left is basketball with Mr. Ayers. He's a paraprofessional in our building that has built like a lot of great relationships with our students. So students, I think it's 100 stickers, they, some of them stay up and they'll play basketball with him. They really enjoy that. The McDonald's coupon, we worked with McDonald's on Sunna Ridge, they donated free Happy Meal coupons. So for 80 stickers, a lot of students like to pick free Happy Meal, and they can go with their family. We have things from like Dairy Queen as well and RVs as well. And then there's other non-tangible prizes like principal helper for an hour with me and Mrs. Pinto. Another popular one is sitting, and Mr. Kennedy, our counselor, is sitting in his chair for the day. They get like wheeled around in his chair, which is really exciting. It's like, it's a big fancy cushion chair with wheels. You can, it's really cute. You could see, we do like fancy lunch at lunch, where students, when they're showing expected behavior in the cafeteria, and then our PDIS assemblies as well. We have two, where I wrote PDIS videos. We worked with the, with North Ridgeville High School last year. So the video production class came over to Liberty and worked with our students on recording expected behavior videos so that our students, they're featured in the videos, which is really cool. So that this year, our teachers, like for example, if a student is kind of messing around in the bathroom, and they're pumping a lot of like soap and paper towels, the teacher might use the video as like a teaching tool and show them the video, this is how you should act. And we're able to use those visuals to teach behavior, which is really great. And then our last building goal focuses on school culture, so not just for the staff, but also for students and families. We really want, we're really working to create an environment where everybody feels prioritized, everybody feels valued. District-wide, all of our buildings have red, all of our administrators, and a lot of the teachers on our district leadership team have read the book School Culture Rewired. And so within that book, there's a survey where we have given it to staff the last two years, so we could kind of see growth and see trends in our school culture data. So the book really helps us like define what is school culture, what is climate, how can we assess it, and how can we transform it? And so we've seen significant improvements in the areas of trust, leadership, and organizational history, just to name a few. We've implemented some new things like buddy classrooms, so all of our first grade and our ABLE classrooms are paired up with the second grade classrooms so they can do activities together. We've created a sunshine committee to recognize staff, like exciting times if they're having a baby or if they're getting married, but also in times of need, like maybe if a loved one passed away. And then also a social committee, or a social committee does a lot with like luncheons at school, but also outside of school events too for staff. And this year, we're really trying to focus on celebrating Mondays and trying to get our team and our students excited to come to school each week. And with our school culture survey, we came up with a school culture plan, and it is divided into three different areas. The first area is focused on students, and so a lot of our school culture plan for students focuses on what we're doing with PDIS. So you can see there, kind of perfect for me to see. So far, and I checked the numbers today, we've recognized 106 students as our remarkable ranger, a remarkable ranger in our building. So that just means each week, teachers can type in just a student name. It's like a quick way to recognize positive behavior. And on Fridays, their name gets called on the announcement, it's a surprise, they get to come down to the office, sign a little paper, and put it on the bulletin board. So Jordan and Quim are our first remarkable rangers of the year, that's from August, but 106 students have been recognized for that so far. So far this year, we've called, we've made 115 student, positive student phone calls. So myself and Mrs. Pinto and our assistant principal do some of those, but now that we have phones in our classrooms, thanks Paul, some of our teachers have been making positive phone calls home as well. So to think that, you know, we have only been in school a month or two, and 115 calls just positive have already been made to home is really exciting. And then obviously, like our students of the month each month, that's another way for us to recognize 29 different students every month. And then on the side, there's just some additional things that we're doing for students. For staff, we have a lot of exciting things been played, it was kind of hard to pick a few. You could see we have a staff pickleball league now. Our new speech pathologist, Nina, it's like her life, she loves pickleball. So she, even though she's new to the building, she really like, she really wanted to do this. And she, every week, I mean, there's like a group text and email chain and all this stuff, and they get together every week. I've yet to be able to make it, but it's, we've had really good feedback. So our staff gets together every week for pickleball. You could see our staff snack cart, Mrs. Pinto and I go around on Mondays. Not every Monday, we've done it once so far, the goal is maybe to do it once a month, but go around and surprise staff, they don't know when it's coming. It's just a little surprise, we knock at the door, would you like a snack? And they're always very excited. We did it last year as well. In the bottom left, you can see team shirt. So at our opening day staff meeting, the, our team came up with those words. Those are all words that our teachers use to describe Liberty. And then we worked with ABLE Not Label to make shirts for the building. So we got those recently, and everybody wore them, they Tuesday, yesterday, everybody wore them yesterday, which is exciting. And then, go back one more, I'm sorry. Lastly, on that slide, it's just our staff bulletin board that we update month to month. It's interactive. Right now, we're focusing on like what brings us joy. And then lastly, we've had 141 staff shout-outs written. So new this year is that families can nominate staff as well. That's an example of a family member shouting out Mr. Lavalia, and also like teammates can shout out one another. So the fact that we've had 141 already is really exciting. And then lastly, our school culture plan, we focused on families. That big picture is a group of Liberty students at the homecoming football game recently. We had Liberty Night. We had 75 students sign up to attend, and then at the beginning of the game, that's who was there, just to kind of get our younger students involved in that Friday night like atmosphere, which was great. We've had Title I literacy night so far this year. We have some community booths at Open House, like Girl Scouts, American Heart Association, the North Ridgeville Public Library, just the name of you. And then the positive phone call challenge, we received a lot of good feedback from families about. And then lastly, the last two are just like a shift in practices that we're really trying to emphasize in the building this year. So just being culturally responsive and not only what we're teaching students, but what we're saying, and that kind of goes with family-inclusive language as well. So understanding that not all of our students might have like a mom or a dad. So even being mindful of like, for example, you might say like, go home and tell mom tonight. Maybe instead, you're saying like, go home and tell your family, or go home and tell an adult. So we're really trying to shift that as well. And then the last slide, just a little bit of a highlight of the modular units. I just wanted to express my gratitude and for our staff as well. We do have even a teacher here tonight who's in the modular units, and I think she would back me up in saying it has just been like tremendous to have this extra space in the building. Having eight big additional classrooms, having three small group rooms, and then the conference room has been major. So having a space where we can host meetings, it's been really, really wonderful. It's been really great. So thank you to our operations and maintenance team. Anybody have questions, there are questions later too.
One last announcement, North Ridgeville City Schools will be hosting a protecting yourself from identity theft and recognizing consumer scams that will be presented by Fifth Third Bank in partnership with the North Ridgeville Police Department. These groups are becoming more and more devious, and they go out of their way. So here's an opportunity, come out here from the professionals, how to protect yourself. Coming from a guy that got a phone call asking me if I spent $700 to visit Miami in February. Much of me wish I was in Miami. So they find ways to get your information. So come out, enjoy in the evening, and we'll get some information on how to protect yourselves. Now, with that being said, you can go out, get your pictures taken. If you'd like to come back for some more riveting information, you're free. If you want to fail, run for the doors.
We would like to get our students and our staff members up there.
Welcome back to the meeting. And here's an opportunity for hearing of the public. If there's anybody in attendance this evening that would like to address the Board of Education, now's your chance. See you, huh? We want to want. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve- It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda resolution as presented.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Grigsby, second by Ms. Saxon. Is there any discussion? Roll call please. Mr. Grigsby? Yes. Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Baca?
Yes.
Finance report, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Baca. We have one item this evening under the finance report. A resolution to approve the financial reports for the month of September 2024. And then to approve this item in one reading.
Second. Moved by Ms. McCarthy, second by myself. Is any discussion? Roll call please.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Baca?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
And moving into other board business with building and operations for Ford. It is recommended the Board of Education approve the Ohio Facilities Construction Commission's Design Review comments as they relate to the high school construction project. I move to approve the Building and Operations Report in one reading.
Second.
Moved by myself, second by Ms. McCarthy. Is any discussion?
I just wanted to mention that I'm so pleased that Hammond Construction said that you're on budget. I mean,
Yeah.
that didn't necessarily happen in the phase of building this particular building we're sitting in right now. So that, that pleases me beyond just beyond imagination, really.
And I like the idea of that in the teachable moment, in the building construction.
Yes.
Very exciting. Go through the whole process. Roll call please.
Mr. Baca? Yes. Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
All right, Human Resources Report, Mr. Haynes?
All right. We have several items to consider under the Human Resources Report. One certified staff replacement contract, one supervisor contract, four support staff appointments, two NREA supplemental contracts, three support staff substitute contracts, one unpaid volunteer recognition, two support staff adjustments, one certified staff leave of absence, one administrative staff resignation, one support staff resignation. I move to approve the Human Resources items in one reading. Second.
Moved by Mr. Haynes, second by Mr. Grigsby. Is there any discussion? Roll call please.
Mr. Haynes? Yes. Mr. Grigsby? Yes. Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mr. Baca?
Yes.
It is recommended that the Board of Education adjourn this regular meetings.
Second.
Roll call please. Mrs. Saxon?
Yes.
Mrs. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Grigsby?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.